I'd like to welcome you to the Board of County Commissioners' workshop. Emphasis is on workshop, that's what this is. We will have an opening. We are certainly pleased to have our citizens joining us in this workshop meeting. I do need to make sure that everyone understands the parameters in which we're operating. Today's workshop is not a rally. It's an informational session. It's an opportunity for all of us to gather information. The Board of County Commissioners is very interested in knowing what's going to be best out of the choices that we have with the limited budgets that we have to move us forward in the business of solid waste. We ask that all understand that this meeting, although it is a public meeting, there are specific speakers who are quote "experts," are classified as experts in their area of interest as it relates to solid waste. At this time, we are going to open the traditional way that we open our meetings versus how we open our workshops, and we're going to have an invocation. We're going to ask Commissioner Harvey to lead us in the invocation, and our Vice Chairman to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day, an opportunity that you gave us to study and learn, to listen, to pay attention today, to be civil to one another, and Lord, to move this county forward. We ask that you guide our conversations, our thoughts today. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please, John. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Thank you, Commissioner Pellicier. Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Gary McIntyre, is going to give us an itinerary of the speakers that he has requested to come to share with us. My understanding is that our first speaker, Mr. Rick Westinghouse Allison, is going to be about a 15-minute presentation, then the Dr. Lou Cicero is going to be about 10, and then the others. We are going to make sure that all points are covered. We do need everyone to not engage in the sidebar conversations that could constitute a distraction to the Board. We are taking notes, and we'll be taking notes on any commentary that we hear. Let me assure you that there will not be any votes and decisions made today. That's not what the workshop is for. It is for information. Those who have not been requested to speak, we ask that you continue to speak via texting us, emailing us, or doing whatever you would need to do. There will be certainly other public hearings on this issue when the Board moves closer to making decisions for our future. Thank you again. Welcome, Mr. Gary McIntyre, to our workshop.
Thank you, Chairman Flag. And first of all, I'd like to thank all of the Commissioners for this opportunity to come to you, and also thank the many committee members that have served in helping come in and brought y'all lots of information in the past two and a half years. It's been ongoing and a very difficult, but a very big decision for y'all. Page is looking forward to build a $300 million plant and employ over 450 employees here in the Putman County area. We're ready to begin, and I think when you see all of the stuff that we have for you and the financial people that are available for you, we're ready to begin to start hiring people and bringing jobs to Putman County. First of all, I'd like to tell you about a little something, and I'm going to give you a little gift from the National Association of Waste to Technology Meeting, which was held a couple of weeks ago in Tampa, Florida, and it was $1,000 to go to that particular open presentation, and there was people really from around the world. So I had the packages that were given to the people as they enrolled and paid their $1,000. I won't collect $1,000 from you, but we've actually brought the whole presentation to Putman County.
Yeah, please, before you distribute the gifts, tell us the value of the gifts and what you have in those bags for the purpose of us being in compliance with Florida statute, sir.
Sure. The gifts were free to me, so I'm assuming they're free to you.
That's not my question. My question is the value of those gifts and what the gifts consist of, sir.
A dollar.
As long as you're being sincere. Proceed.
I said it was a gift, and it may not be the right...
I asked you about the value, but it's fine. Go ahead and continue, sir. We have to be in compliance with the law. That's all I'm asking. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. This package was given out to everyone that attended the seminar, which was the 23rd Annual North American Waste to Energy Conference in Tampa, Florida. It was held on April the 29th and went on to May 1st. If you will look through the actual presentation and the guest speakers, you will find some of the guest speakers in this room here today. They will be glad to address some of the issues that you have concerned. We're going to open it up with Ms. Allison Yekel from Westinghouse Plasma Gasification, and she will address all of it. If there's any questions after they do their presentation, please answer all. We'll be glad to answer all questions, and of course, at the end of it, after the three presentations, there will always be further questions. Let me introduce some of the people that are here. Besides Allison, we have Dr. Lou Cicero, that has over 45 years in plasma application, professor at Georgia Tech, and actually worked with the DOD, Defense and Nuclear Agencies. Dr. Gary Young, author of a book, which we have showed y'all many times, Municipal Solid Waste to Energy: Convergent Process Economics, Technical, Renewable Comparisons, and has over 40 years' experience in processing in energy-related industries. Dr. Bob Eason, chemical, with over 20 years of experience in microcomponents, and has over 22 patents in the industry. Mr. Carl Conquest is our Chief Financial Officer, who works our budget and answers directly to the investors and counts for every penny that comes in and goes out. Mark Corillo is basically our social media expert, and he has basically set up our webpage now that is up and running, and will be adding this meeting to our particular webpage. Brad Higgins is our TV production. We're setting up TV ads that will, we feel that will be informational ads throughout North Florida, and they will start in the probably latter part of July. Mr. Dave Hodges is our security expert. He is basically President of the PI Associations here in the state of Florida, and is a licensed private eye, and he would do all of our background checks, not only on us and our investors, but every employee. Don Berg, personal friend, been over a friend for over 40 years. He would be our logistic expert. He will be going out seeking the waste to bring into the plant when we hope to open it in three years. Bobby Barnes, he is our insurance, works with Willis Insurance, and he works with Willis Insurance on the Energy Practical Group, which is global insurance for energy. So we have lots of people. We've only designated Mr. Flag for three speakers, but as you see, we did bring other people aboard, so if there was other questions, you could feel comfortable to answer all of those particular questions. There were some other people that we'd liked to brought with us, but again, some people had to stay and work. So I appreciate it. If Ms. Allison will come to the table, we'll let her begin. Allison with Westinghouse Plasma Corporation.
Welcome, Ms. Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Commissioners, Council. I appreciate the invitation. I'm here today to present the current status of the Westinghouse Plasma Technology and the commercial projects that are operating globally. Westinghouse Plasma Corporation is a commercially proven technology. We lead the plasma gasification industry, which is becoming the more preferred method of waste energy for various global markets. Westinghouse Plasma Corporation has large Fortune 500 customers, including air products and chemicals, who has invested almost $1 billion in two facilities being constructed in northern England, in the Tees Valley region. Our past clients include larger customers such as GM, Hitachi Metals, and NASA. Currently, our plasma gasification technology processes various waste streams, including municipal solid waste, but also including more difficult waste streams, such as medical waste, hazardous waste, tires, and any other various mixtures of those wastes. The evolution of the plasma gasification technology has been supported by many worldwide leaders, such as Hatch, Uda, Solar Turbines, Velocis, GE, Technip, and others. Our value chain relationships extend to other technology partners for flexible solutions that meet our customers' needs. The Westinghouse Plasma Technology has been verified by leading companies, such as Juniper Consultancy, in order to further validate the position of the technology in the waste to energy market. We have several commercially operating facilities around the world, as well as others in various stages of construction and commissioning. Now I'll give you a brief overview of those projects. The first project in the presentation is one located in Qaidi, China, or Wuhan, China. This is a facility that is owned and operated by Wuhan Qaidi Electric Power Company. It was commissioned to process 150 tons per day of waste into liquids in 2013. Wuhan Qaidi's goal is to develop larger-scale projects, up to 1,000 tons per day, identified for waste to liquids, including power, using the Westinghouse Plasma Technology. Qaidi is a large public company with revenue of over $2 billion per year, and is very proactive with the Westinghouse Plasma Technology and the liquids market. In India, another example of the Westinghouse Plasma Technology operating commercially, to process various waste streams from 40 to 60 different sources to dispose of hazardous waste. This facility is capable of producing electricity. The facility demonstrates the flexibility of the technology to process changes in the incoming waste stream, such as municipal waste will be. Another facility operating since early 2000s, owned and operated by Hitachi Metals. This facility processes a mixture of municipal waste and sewage sludge, and then uses that energy generated to produce hot air, instead of using fossil fuels. Another facility in Shanghai, China, uses a mixture of medical waste and other hazardous waste to produce steam. This steam is then sold to a neighboring host to replace their usage of fossil fuels. The byproducts of this facility, as well as others, would be a vitrified, inorganic, non-leaching ash product or slag product that can be used and sold to the construction The two facilities that I mentioned in my introduction will be owned and operated by Air Products and Chemicals. Air Products and Chemicals is building two identical facilities, each capable of producing 50 megawatts gross of renewable power from waste collected in the nearby region. This electricity is generated with, in a combined-cycle configuration, in a gas turbine. Gas turbines require strict syn gas specifications in order to function properly. The Westinghouse Plasma Technology has demonstrated that it can produce this level of syn gas in order to meet strict specifications for downstream equipment. While employing many people in the construction, commissioning, and operation phases of Tees Valley 1, Tees Valley 2, an identical facility is being built basically right next door. So combined, there will be 100 megawatts gross of renewable power available to the These two facilities are extremely important because they demonstrate many things significant to the technology. One is that industrial-scale volumes of syn gas can be generated from waste materials. Typically, these amounts of energy is generated from fossil fuels. This amount of energy generated at the Tees Valley sites could be equivalent to up to 2,000 barrels per day of liquid fuels. The strict specifications of the turbines are met by the syn gas generated from waste via the Westinghouse Plasma Technology in order to make the highest value and products, which could include liquid fuels. The Plasma Technology also demonstrates that renewable energy from waste can be a low-cost alternative to other fuels. In conclusion, the Westinghouse Plasma Technology is a commercially proven process to convert waste into renewable energy. We have facilities operating in advanced stages, and in advanced stages ranging from 24 tons per day up to 1,000 tons per day. However, the Tees Valley 1 and 2 projects will demonstrate a 2,000-ton per day overall operating process. The Plasma Technology provides flexibility to use waste fuels, such as municipal waste, medical waste, and other mixtures, to provide renewable energy at an industrial scale. Since the technology development, Westinghouse has used global partners with expertise in various aspects of project development, construction, commissioning, and ownership, as well as execution. Finally, the Westinghouse Plasma Technology provides flexibility to convert various waste types into renewable fuel. Thank you for the opportunity to present the commercially status of the technology, and I welcome questions now or at the end.
Yes, ma'am. If you would, let me give the Commissioners opportunity to ask some questions, if they have any. Thank you.
Yes, I... How do you say your last name?
Good question. I just got married almost a year ago, so I'm still perfecting it as well. It's pronounced Yekel.
Yekel.
Yes, ma'am.
About a spelling.
Thank you. I think I can...
Thank you, Nancy. I know I messed that one up.
Which plant is the oldest one? All of these that you've described, Westinghouse is involved in?
Yes, ma'am.
Are using Westinghouse Technology?
Yes, ma'am, they are. The oldest one, so the longest operating facility, could be considered the one in Madison, Pennsylvania. It's a pilot-scale facility. It has actually been there since the early '70s. It was converted into a gasification facility probably in the '90s in support of these commercial facilities. Of the commercial facilities, the Japanese facility was commissioned in the early 2000s and is still operating today.
Okay, so the one in Pennsylvania is still a test facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what does it produce now? How many tons per day?
The facility in Madison is a pilot demonstration facility, so it's, we use it for specific purposes, but its total capacity is about 24 tons per day.
And the one in Japan that's been operating from the 2000s, what capacity does it have for tonnage per day?
Also about 24 tons per day.
Okay. What is the oldest one that produces larger amounts of tonnage per day?
The oldest one, well, the India facility is about an 80-ton per day, give or take, amount of waste, so that one would come in second as far as commercially operating facilities.
Okay, and it's how old?
I want to say late 2000s, 2005, '06 or '07, yeah.
Okay, that's close enough. With the facilities that you've named, let's just say the one in India, since it's 80 tons per day, can you tell us any of the problems that you have had with that facility? Have there been any problems, like shutdowns, or, you know, do you have to shut down for a long time for repairs, or have there been any carbons or anything released to the atmosphere that is not supposed to be there?
Yes, ma'am. So the facility actually functions extremely well, given the range of feedstocks that it was designed for. So it was designed to process between 40 and 60 different feedstocks, and given that range, there is a large range of syn gas or byproducts that could be produced, or that could have been anticipated during the design phase. Those were anticipated, so any range of fuels coming in were anticipated, and that facility operates as designed, so it's producing power via steam.
And what does it take? Is it municipal waste?
It's what they classify in India as common hazardous waste, or, so it's depending on the area of the world, how that, what's actually included in that classification, but the classification is called common hazardous waste. So it could range anywhere from what we traditionally throw away in the trash, to chemicals and other things like of that nature. So it's a mixture of even...
Hospital waste, that kind of thing?
I wouldn't say there's hospital waste, but there could be some residuals from trash from hospitals. I wouldn't say, there's no red bag material there.
Okay. Do you have anything in production that is along the lines of, well, right now, we're producing 200 tons per day, and I think, what is it, you project 1,000 tons per day with your facility, Mr. McIntyre?
That's what we recommend, Nancy, basically, because that's a production because of cost, and what we looked at, again, we go back and look at the ones in England, and also talking to the designers and engineers of Westinghouse, they felt that was the break-even point of making it a profitable plant, using waste energy.
The one in England is fairly new. Is it even up and going yet?
It's under commissioning as we speak.
It's being built?
It's under commissioning. There are two identical facilities. They're, both are 1,000 ton per day, and both are designed to produce 50 megawatts of combined-cycle power with a gas turbine. So each facility is 1,000 tons per day, and that is the scale that works in that particular area of the world.
Okay, so it is up and running?
No, I'm sorry, that was your question. I'm sorry. It is under commissioning, so it is due to be up and running this summer.
It is, so it's being built, is that...
No, it's completely built.
Cut through the trace. What is commissioning? That's what she's trying to ask you.
Yeah. What exactly does that mean?
Commissioning is that there's...
You're going to hit it with a bottle of champagne?
They're getting their permits, or what is that?
No, they're starting up the equipment, yeah. It's not producing electricity to the grid yet. They're starting up equipment. There are certain sections of the facility that need started up individually, and then they start the facility up altogether.
So...
So individually, the individual portions of the plant are being started up.
So it's too early to know if there are any problems with that one?
No, well, we're getting feedback all the time, and everything's on schedule. Operational problems as far as producing syn gas and sending electricity to the grid, we're not there yet, but those problems are not anticipated.
We actually have a ribbon-cutting set, and many of our staff will be going to the ribbon-cutting on June the 23rd in England, so we'll be over there for that ribbon-cutting and opening.
Okay, thank you.
District 2.
Okay, back to the Tees Valley plant. July is the plan opening. Is that still on schedule this summer?
Yep, so the schedule is set by Air Products and Chemicals. The facility's owned by them, so we don't set, Westinghouse Plasma does not set the schedule, but yes, that is, a planned schedule is by this summer, to be started up and be feeding.
Now, the feedstock for that plant is what exactly?
Municipal waste.
And it is in place, is that correct?
It's municipal.
I mean, we've located this plant, we're a large municipal, I think municipal, that's my question. What is the feedstock?
So the feedstock is municipal waste.
Okay, and how many tons is projected to be there?
1,000 metric tons.
No, 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 that's how many you'll do a date. What's there as far as the total tonnage in feedstock next to the plant?
Surplus.
I don't understand your question.
How much garbage is in that facility that they project to burn? I understand it's on quite a few cells, and really, they refer to them as mounds of garbage.
The facility is projected to and will process 1,000 tons per day. Ma'am, I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'll try it when I get there.
No, but it's, how much garbage is in the Tees Valley?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I guess another way is putting it, how much is in the warehouse, so to speak?
Available in the region?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that question.
All right.
That's all right, go on, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pellicier. I'm good right now, I'm thinking.
Let me help you out there just a second. The plant is, you see Plant 1 and Plant 2, so they're anticipating over 2,000 tons of municipal solid waste.
I know all that, Mr. McIntyre. Just wanted to know, you plan on trucking feedstock here. I'd like to know what's there. That's all, it's a simple question.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Allison, if you don't mind, I'll just say that way, okay?
Sure.
The one in England that's producing electricity right now, it's not producing fuel, other types of fuel, is that correct?
The configuration of the Tees Valley facility is to produce electricity.
Okay, why isn't it producing fuel, which would be probably a better market, wouldn't it be?
Not in the location where it has been picked, yeah. So different locations throughout the world have different business models. So the business model that is the most successful in the Tees Valley region is to produce power from combined-cycle.
But wouldn't that facility just be a hyped-up incinerator, pretty much?
No, sir. Incineration, and the PhDs in the room will certainly go into detail about this, but gasification differs from incineration on a chemical level and a temperature level. So gasification is able to process or provide a process at higher temperature, therefore producing syn gas as a byproduct, rather than flue gas as a byproduct.
So you're not sending anything into the atmosphere over in England? You're making syn gas and using that to run the electricity grid, basically?
The facility, the gasification technology does produce syn gas. There is downstream equipment that will utilize the syn gas, and then there will be appropriate gas cleanup, there is appropriate gas cleanup equipment there.
All right. And if I missed this during your introduction, where did you get your credentials from? Where'd you go to school?
I went to the University of Pittsburgh for my mechanical engineering bachelor's, and I went to Chatham... and I went to Chatham College to get my mathematics bachelor's.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Florida.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Jacob, yes.
Can the machine or the unit do, um, electricity and fuels?
It can.
At, and you can just, for layman's terms, flip a switch and we're gonna do fuel, flip a switch, we're gonna make electricity?
The facility will be configured, if it, if, if liquid fuels are the main byproduct of interest, the facility will be maximized to produce liquid fuels, and then residual syn gas will be used to make electricity.
While I'm respectful of your global presence, and I can appreciate the UK and the Japan and the China, uh, and so forth and so on, I want to focus my attention on the United States of America, okay? Uh, the pilot plant, uh, the Pennsylvania, um, test plant or demonstration plant, uh, that's there, um, how long will the pilot plant be a pilot plant? And why don't you convert it from pilot to a regular operating plant, uh, so that we can have the real deal happening in America now, before you go out and start doing some other stuff?
Yes, sir. So the, the environment where the pilot facility exists, uh, we're, it, there's a site-specific, um, way that we can operate there, it has nothing to do with the technology whatsoever. It has to do with basically the, the owner of the site, which we are not, the land in which we are there. So the facility has been, and was intended, and still is, uh, permitted to be an R and D facility. So we have not converted it to a commercially operating facility, because we have commercially operating facilities around the world that are demonstrating the technology at a larger scale than our pilot facility is operating.
So you mean to tell me that the only place in America that you're interested in is Putnam County?
No, sir.
Okay. You want to elaborate?
Uh, we're interested in America in general, all over, I mean, we're here, uh, Westinghouse Plasma has been supporting A Page for the past ten years, as the technology provider. So we provide that support to project developers like A Page. So we are, um, supporting those project developers where they present projects that are relevant in the United States. So we're not functioning as, as project developers, owners and operators. So we're looking forward, uh, toward qualified project developers like A Page, and then we will supply the technology to those projects.
Okay, so an existing location that brings in a thousand, um, tons per day, that's already established, not having to go out and solicit, uh, garbage, uh, from, from other locations, don't you think that poses a better formula? I need our technician to get this feedback out of my mic, too, if you can get her attention, please, thank you.
She's got it.
Your, your question is, one thousand tons per day would be a better solution for the US compared to-
No ma'am, I'm speaking about our county. We do not generate, as of now, uh, we do not generate, uh, the tonnage that we, that we need here. And so, in order for us to deal with the economy of scale, in order for everything to be successful, uh, certainly has to be more than two hundred.
It all depends on the economics of the project, which are individually, uh, different per project. So the one thousand tons per day is the scale of the project at Tees Valley for a reason, the economics and technical reasons, plus backend technology, so the turbines want as much gas as a thousand tons a day of waste can produce. So if, uh, Putnam County could only sustain a facility of half the size, um, then the technology provided by Westinghouse could provide syn gas from five hundred tons per day.
If I may, Mr. Frack, the problem we have in that is a cost of a facility-
Speaking to my-
Uh, the problem we have there with the cost of a facility, uh, five hundred tons a day, it just costs the same, almost the same amount as a facility doing a thousand tons a day. So when you break down the economics of it, and our investors will address that, is that it's got to be economical, feasible for Putnam County, as well as, uh, advanced plasma arc gasification energy. Westinghouse is our engineering design and helps us get there. They don't really have anything to do with what location, uh, it is looked at. As you well know, there's other locations in the United States that is being considered by other developers, if you want to use that terminology, Reno, Nevada, for example.
Okay, so tell me where any other commercial operations, uh, are currently existing in America. Like I say, I have nothing against those other countries, this is USA, and I, I'm just concerned that all we have in America is a pilot station. Where is the actual, uh, replication or the success story in our nation that you can draw from to help us to understand that this is happening here?
The sad thing about it is that the United States is very far behind in technology, not only in this industry, sir, but in many industries. If you go to China, or you go to India, or around the world, you're finding out that we're far behind, just because of our political structure right now, and that's very sad. As a disabled Vietnam veteran, they're building one of these plants in Vietnam now, but yet we can't get one in the United States that employs people. And all I hear throughout the United States, when I go to Houston or I go to Atlanta, is that we need jobs. We need four hundred and fifty jobs paying good sowers. That's one we're bringing to Putnam County, sir. Yes, it will not be easy, Mr. Frack, I'll sit here, it won't be easy. We want no money from you. We don't want any of your taxpayers' money.
Stay on, stay on, on point, I don't need you to, to glamorize this, I'm simply saying, how much assurance do you have that you're gonna be able to comply with federal, state and local regulations if you don't have it happening now? That's all I'm asking. And I'd need the audience to listen to the answer as well, thank you.
Please, a- ask the question, yeah, I'm not really understanding it.
You're telling me again how far behind we are in America, and you're telling me about the political, um, ramifications. I'm asking you, since you are so certain of the product, product here, and I'm, I'm, I'm studying, I'm listening-
Sure.
And I'm learning, uh, contrary to what others may think, we're not against your project. We just need proof in the pudding, and we need rhyme with your rhythm. And so I'm simply asking, how much assurance do you have that you, your product and everyone concerned is going to be able to meet the standard that the federal government, state government and local regulations? I, I mean, you, you sound like you're, you're sure, but yet you say how far behind we are, and you want us to be the trailblazers.
Yes, uh, first of all, let me explain, uh, there is an air operating permit that was presented to a company that was trying to do the same thing in, uh, St. Lucie County. We have a copy of that permit and the permit number, so we already know what we have to do. And again, the information that was given to that, we're following that same permit, presenting it to the state of Florida for our, our air operating permit. So it's about six hundred and something pages, and we're ready to produce that to, uh, EPA and DOE and everybody else that's necessary to get the permit. That'll probably cost a couple million dollars just to get that permit, because it does have to be backed by engineers. But that is a permit that we have in hand, uh, from a similar program that was presented in another area.
That's a wonderful segue. How is St. Lucie County doing right now?
Well, there was a couple of issues in St. Lucie County. If you remember, sir, in our economy back in two thousand and five, the individual that was trying to build it at that particular time was giving money and, uh, was, uh, was able to receive quite a bit of money to do that program. Uh, two thousand and eight came along, and he was in the real estate business. As you well know, the bank started to call all of their notes, so they called his notes, and he decided to close the facility, uh, well, actually, let me rephrase it, whenever closed, whenever, and then there was no groundbreaking at all. So he decided not to proceed with that pers- particular procedures.
But they have all of the permits, you're saying, they, they comply with all of the permits, but the facility never really came to reality?
Correct, yes, sir, he, he decided-
Would that not be a key place then, if they have all of that? I'm just asking.
Sure. Uh, I have talked to Ronnie Robinson, which is their landfill manager, and, um, I, I don't, that's not the right word, waste manager person down there, and they have actually gone out for bids, and are looking for, uh, processors to build one in that particular area, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Leibel.
But the difference is, in St. Lucie County, they're building a gasification incinerator, not a plasma arc incinerator.
The actual application for the permit was a plasma arc gasification.
But they're building a gasifier, I know that for a fact, I spoke with the gentleman also.
Oh, okay, again, I don't know what they went out for bids for, again, I only know that the one that wa- was presented, that we have a copy of the air operating permit, was with Westinghouse Plasma, and that's the, the air operating permit that we're working off of.
Their direction now is towards a gasifier.
Okay, that's, again, that's, I, I don't know what they're, actually, what they're doing now.
Any other questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Ms. Allison, are you familiar, since Nevada was brought up, um, the Obama administration USDA, I believe, loan McLaren County, Nevada, a hundred and four million dollars, or gave them a grant for their, um, art plasma gasification plant out there? I believe a company out of Canada was gonna build it, and I believe it was Kathy Airlines that had signed a contract to get all the jet fuel that that facility produces, are you aware of that?
I am not.
Okay.
But I believe Gary is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I can help you on that, and actually, Dr. Gary Young is very familiar with that, and that is in his presentation, he will-
Then we'll wait for that, then, thank you, sir.
Mr. Pellicier.
This is for Ms. Allison. Um, we're sitting on probably ninety to a hundred acres of a trash mountain out there. That was the question that I think Commissioner Leibel was trying to get conveyed to you about how much warehouse. We've got a warehouse of garbage, ninety to a hundred acres. Are any of these other facilities blending, I guess what would be current waste streams with a surplus? Cause you're gonna have all kind of byproduct, and one thing big is, there's gonna be a lot of dirt in it. Are any of those other plants, wherever they are around the world, doing the same process as what we would need to be doing to clean up our mountain?
Uh, specifically, the facilities that are currently operating are not mining current landfills. However, there are, uh, some of the facilities, like the one in China, the smaller facility in China, and the one in India in particular, are processing waste streams with extremely high ash. So soil, dirt, uh, rocks, glass, anything inorganic, is coming in as fresh material, but soil would be, can, you know, considered that. So some of these facilities are getting construction and demolition waste, which includes concrete and metal, so all of which are considered, uh, inorganic ash. So the ability to process, uh, materials like soil is, is not an issue for the Westinghouse Plasma technology.
I guess my, in layman's terms, is the dirt gonna clog it up?
It is not.
Thank you, Perry County, who is your next speaker, sir?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, District one?
I'm sorry, I have one more.
Actually, uh-
Just a minute, she have another question?
Yes, to answer your question, uh, Dr. Lou Cesero, who actually has a patent in ma- mining, uh, line, landfills, will be the next speaker, and he'll be able to answer that question much better for you, Walt.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre, Commissioner Harris.
Mrs. Jacob, um, I understand that there was a plant in Japan, uh, it may be Ute Shiny, Shiny?
Utashinai, yes.
Thank you, I knew there was a way to do that, that sounded better.
Jacob, Utashinai, I'm bilingual.
And that plant was two hundred tons a day, similar to Putnam County?
Yes, ma'am.
And it was running, but it was forced to shut down. What happened? Was that one of yours, Westinghouse Technology?
Yes, ma'am, the technology implemented at that facility was the Westinghouse Plasma technology. The reason for the shutdown was an economic reason. Um, in Japan, due to its, um, territory, it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, an island. So the available waste is somewhat, it, they have a very high recycling, uh, program in Japan. So the available waste for waste to energy is extremely competitive. So the waste contract owned by Hitachi Metals was, uh, expired, so therefore they had no more waste coming to the facility, therefore no more reason to operate the facility. It had, the reason for the shutdown was not technical at all.
Okay, how long did it run?
Um, it was commissioned around the same time as the, uh, other Japanese facility, so in the early two thousands. It operated until about two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
So point of clarification, increased recycling caused the amount of solid waste available? You're saying that's the primary reason?
I wouldn't say recycling programs are the primary reason, I would say there's a competitive market in Japan in general, uh, for waste to energy. So they have already, it, for years, Japan has implemented a very sophisticated recycling program, and so then the leftovers is what goes to, uh, waste to energy. So that market is becoming increasingly competitive, because they're very advanced in their renewables, uh, portfolio, and their waste to energy portfolio. So there's a lot of facilities there competing for waste product as a fuel source.
So it sounds like we need a sophisticated recycling plan, just-
I encourage recycling, Westinghouse Plasma encourages recycling, sir, yes.
Very good, yes, sir, next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Allison. Can we just take a three-minute break, uh, before the next speaker starts? We need a just, just a three-minute break, thank you.
Okay, well, that'll give our, give us time to set the screen up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Back in session, Mr. McIntyre, we introduce the next speaker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ouch.
Dr. Lou Cesero has not only been the, a, uh, plasma arc gasification leader, but he's actually been a very close friend for the last fifteen years, and, uh, guiding us and our investors on succeeding and making this a, a very profitable organization. Uh, Dr. Lou Cesero.
Thank you, Dr. Lou, for being with us.
Uh, thank you very much. Let me first say, I really appreciate the opportunity to, to talk to you about what I consider my favorite, uh, subject, and at my age, maybe at my only subject. But, uh, I've been involved with plasma technology since, uh, nineteen seventy-one, uh, wh- when me and, and, and my colleague, uh, Dr. Camacho, developed the first patent on, on plasma waste to energy, and, and we've been, uh, working on that, uh, ever since now, and Dr. Camacho has passed away now, but, uh, uh, we, we, we're very happy, or, 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 I'm very happy to see plasma finally going mainstream, and I really have to congratulate, uh, Westinghouse Plasma for having the initiative of, uh, pursuing this for, for the last, uh, twenty-five years, that they've been involved in, in, in plasma waste to energy technology. Uh, for, for this particular presentation, uh, since, uh, the time is, uh, of, uh, value, what I decided to do is, is, is to just put together this one slide, talking about the principal benefits of plasma, uh, MSW gasification, uh, uh, do an, uh, a, a small explanation on each one of these, and see if you have any particular questions. Uh, uh, the first one is, uh, and this is perhaps one of the more important ones, is that when using plasma waste to energy, as opposed to other, uh, technologies like conventional gasification or, or inc- incineration, we get more power production, uh, uh, from, from plasma than, uh, a- any of these other technologies. And if we're talking regular, uh, steam techo- uh, steam turbine technology, we get fifty percent, uh, more, uh, electricity than you get out of a waste to energy incinerator with the same throughput. If we're talking combined cycle, like they are doing in the UK, where you take the syn gas and, and, uh, run that through a gas turbine, uh, uh, then, then we get fifty percent more electricity from, from that process. So, uh, uh, th- this ends up to close to twice the electricity than you would get, uh, from, uh, uh, from an incineration process. So, so the bottom line is, if you want electricity, if you want to make power, then, then really plasma should be the, uh, one of the prime, uh, candidates that, that are, ought to be, uh, considered ab- above any of these other processes. Uh, the next thing, uh, i- is that the, uh, many people say, well, plasma's too expensive, you know, we can't afford that, blah, blah, blah. But, but, uh, when you come right down to it, the, the cost, the capital cost of a plasma plant uh, i- is comparable to the, uh, to the cost of a, uh, a, a, a waste to energy, a mass burn waste to energy, which is the newest technology, uh, uh, capital cost. Uh, a- and, uh, uh, if, if you would like- cost. And if you would like, if you take one of these plasma systems and you, and you put one in the vicinity of a, of a existing coal-fired power plant, then you're able to use many of the, of the, of the systems in the coal plant, such as the gas cleaning systems and the electrical generation systems, and a few of the other systems. So you can cut the costs of the plasma plant by up to fifty percent. And this also would reduce the maintenance and operational cost by close to fifty percent. So instead of talking, you know, maybe three, three hundred million dollars that was mentioned earlier for a thousand ton a day plant, you know, this could be down as low as a hundred and fifty million dollars, which would put the cost way, way below any other possible waste to energy technology. The next thing is about the emissions, and people are very concerned about the, about the gases coming out of a plasma plant. But in fact, the gases are very clean for a couple of reasons, though. One is, one is because very little air is used in a plasma plant. It's around ten percent of what is normally used for an incineration plant. So there's a lot less gas produced, so it's much easier to clean that gas. The next thing is that if you're using some of the new gas cleaning technologies, which the coal plants are going to now, and which was developed for clean coal technology, you can, you can actually make the, the, the gas to be as clean, or even cleaner than the natural gas. And the bottom line on that is that emissions can be made cleaner than natural gas emissions from domestic household gas stoves. And people aren't concerned about their gas stoves at home running natural gas, and we can essentially get the same type of gas from plasma. In fact, in the combined cycle system that is being used in the UK, the syn gas has to be as clean as natural gas in order to be used in the gas turbines, because otherwise you'd ruin the gas turbines. So it's very important that this gas be very, very clean. The next thing I think is also very important. We actually reduce the amount of greenhouse gases going into the atmosphere. And for every ton of municipal waste that is processed, we can actually reduce the greenhouse gases by one to three tons. And one of the big reasons for this is that this garbage does not go into a landfill, which produces methane gas, which is a very bad greenhouse gas, et cetera. And there's, there's a couple of other reasons for that, too. But this is one of the few, if not the only, technology that actually takes greenhouse gases out of the atmosphere. Not even nuclear reactors do this. They just don't produce greenhouse gases. But we actually reduce the greenhouse gases from, that are already in the atmosphere, that would otherwise be there if, if, if the power was made by a coal-fired power plant. The next thing is the high-value byproducts. And this is very, very important, too, because this hits on the economics of plasma. And as was mentioned in the past, oh, thank you, was mentioned in the past, we get the byproducts of aggregate, and I'm sure you've seen the aggregate that is produced. And, but also, we can take the molten stream, and we've actually done this, you know, many years ago, Dr. Camacho and myself, and we've run it through these spinning machines, and we can make a mineral wool, you know, from this, from this molten stream, which makes a great insulation material. And this sells for about fifty dollars a ton, but this would sell for upwards of five hundred to six hundred dollars a ton, and they cost about the same to make. So this is a real boon to the whole economics of the process. In fact, there's a company that, in, actually, in Fort Lauderdale, who is interested in taking municipal waste and not making electricity except a small amount to run the plant, and just making that mineral wool insulation and selling that. And they, and they say that they can make a larger profit selling that mineral wool insulation than is possible, than what they would make in selling the electric power. The, the next thing, which is not, it's not on my screen here, but essentially, there's no landfill requirements with plasma. If some products have to go to the landfill, they would be non-hazardous and very, very small. We're talking maybe a couple of percent of the, of the weight of the throughput of the coal plant. And then finally, for many, many years, people have been looking at energy storage from renewable energy. And they call this the holy grail of renewable energy, and nobody has really come up with a, with a good solution, except for plasma gasification of municipal waste. And we can do this by taking the syn gas and cleaning the syn gas, you know, to close, close to natural gas, and then storing the syn gas for when we need it for peak periods or for other times. And we can actually have this storage of renewable energy products. So these are the main principal benefits, you know, I think, that I've seen over the years for plasma gasification. There are a few others, but these are the principal ones I see. And I'm really looking forward to this technology starting to take off, since it's finally starting to go mainstream after so many years of working on the technology and making presentations, et cetera, et cetera. So I really appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Cicero. District One?
Okay, thank you. I have two questions for you. One of them, since you brought some, I guess, that slag, that black...
Oh, yeah, the slag.
Okay. In my studying about it, and I'm still new at this, too, we're all trying to digest a lot, but I read that some of it has components in it that are not healthy, and some of it is saleable. So how do you know which one is which, and is there a way to make the slag come out all pure?
Well, if the slag is made with a plasma system, you know, I've been, I've been melting garbage and all kinds of other things for forty years now, and if it's melted properly, we don't have any problems. As a matter of fact, the French have built a facility for their incinerator in Bordeaux, France, and the French government did a three-year study on the, on the slag. And, and actually, the results, I have a small article, the, the lifetime of the vitrified fiat, which is the vitrified material, stored in the blocks is twelve million years. And then the performance of the villat in terms of lifetime are similar to those of natural basalt. And what they do, they tested every quarter, and I have an article I can leave with you on that. And for twenty years now, they've been selling this slag to the highway department with no problem. And the Japanese are doing the same thing with making the aggregate for road construction, they're making sand. Japanese like to make sand rather than the aggregate, but that's used in concrete and in asphalt work, and they've conducted their own studies, and they've been doing this for at least twenty years. So I don't think that there's a big problem, you know, with the slag being leachable, so to speak. And in fact, the Department of Energy, in one of their studies, said that this vitrified slag is five times less leachable than bottle glass. And the only thing that's less leachable than that was a Pyrex glass. So I don't, I don't really see a problem. And I haven't read any studies that say that the slag may not be unleachable. Everything is going to leach a little bit, you know, let's face that, you know, nothing is, is, never, you never say never. But I've never had any big problems, certainly not to exceed the, what the limits, you know, have been established.
Okay. That's my second question. I'm not sure if you're the speaker I need to ask this to. Can you hear me? I'll speak right into it. Okay. If you have a plant, like the one in Japan, that closed, and their reason was they didn't have enough waste, if a plant closes, what is required for the cleanup? I mean, someone has to dismantle everything and take it apart, and are there any chemicals around that have to be treated a certain way? And what is required in the cleanup of a plant that no longer will exist?
Well, as a matter of fact, for the Utashinai plant, they did take that down and return the land to what it originally was. And as far as I know, there was no big problem with the cleanup, because everything coming out of that plant is essentially non-hazardous. So I think Westinghouse Plasma could probably answer that better than I can, and maybe Allison can check on that for you when she gets back.
All right. Thank you.
District Two?
Yep.
I'm good. District Four?
Thank you. Dr. Cicero, I just have a couple of questions. I think in your presentation, you had mentioned that there were some emissions from this plant, or I guess, the arc plasma gasification plant? Is that correct?
Well, the emissions from the plant, after the gases are cleaned, are cleaner than natural gas, natural gas emissions. For example, when you burn gas in your gas stove at home, you know, you get certain emissions out of that.
The reason I ask, there seemed to be some confusion on whether there'd be a smoke stack or not a smoke stack, and if there was, what would come out of that? So I just wanted to clarify that. So there would be some emissions, but it would be cleaner than our household emissions?
Yeah, yeah. And there's certainly going to be, you know, carbon monoxide, you know, emissions, et cetera. But as far as anything that's considered a hazardous emission, you know, I don't think there's a problem there, and nobody else has detected a problem. And if you look at the, at the, at the air permit from the state of Florida, because they actually visited Georgia Tech and our lab and everything, they spent three days up at Georgia Tech, and they were completely satisfied about the emissions that was coming out. And that's readily available on the internet.
And you've been doing this since nineteen seventy-one at Georgia Tech? Is that correct?
No, 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 no. I got to Georgia Tech in nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay.
And I started the lab there at Georgia Tech at that, at that time. And, but I've been working with Dr. Camacho in his lab, which was in Raleigh, North Carolina. I was in Washington, DC at the time.
Okay.
So the two of us were the principals back then.
I have one more question.
Just before you go to that question, I want to make sure I heard you right. You say it's just carbon monoxide?
No, 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 carbon dioxide.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Well, carbon monoxide is one of the gases for syn gas and hydrogen, of course.
I just, I want to make sure my notes is accurate. Continue, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. You had mentioned the clean coal technology and scrubbing that emissions, as I can put it, in layman's terms, if you will. We have an employer here in the county that uses coal. Is there some way to grab their emissions and recapture that and use that inside this arc plasma gasification plant? To cleanse the atmosphere a little better, or?
Well, some people say that you could use plasma to clean the, clean gases, and you can certainly get rid of tars, and, you know, and some of these other compounds. Because plasma disassociates the compounds, you know, into the basic elements, and then they normally turn it to acid gases, and you neutralize those gases, you know, with lime or other elements like that. But I'm not sure that this is any kind of a standard practice right now.
I understand. Thank you.
But as far as emission technologies, there are essentially five clean coal technologies, which I think would really clean up virtually any kind of emissions, from coal plants to plasma plants, gasification plants, et cetera.
Well, that's impressive. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cicero.
District Five?
Dr. Gary Young will answer that question in a little more detail if you'll bring that up.
Yeah. Any further questions for this speaker?
I have none.
Real quickly, if I could, just, Dr. Cicero, the syn gas, when you take it to storage, is it converted to liquid at that point?
No, no, no. It's just a gas. Yeah. I'm sure you could liquefy it if you wanted to go through the trouble, but to just store it in gas storage tanks would probably be all you need to do, especially if you're going to be using it, you know, for peak periods and things like that.
Thank you, Perry County. Mr. McIntyre, if you will introduce your next speaker.
This young man has also been in the business for over forty years, and I think he'll answer some of your questions, Larry, about that, and he'll open that. Keep in mind, every plant has its design, and will be designed for that particular area. So there is lots of opportunity here that we have seen. We actually went by the Georgia Pacific Plant and the Seminole Plant, and he got very excited about the opportunities there. So please welcome Dr. Gary Young.
Good afternoon, Dr. Young. Welcome to Putnam County. Thank you for the trip.
Well, thank you, and I welcome Putnam County Commissioners for inviting me to have the opportunity to speak before you. I've been in engineering a couple of years anyway. I'm seventy-two, and I'm still working and enjoy it. And you just can't leave engineering. Been married forty-six years to my wife, and my only wife, first one, and I enjoy that, too. I love my wife, and I love engineering, and she keeps telling me that I love engineering first and her second. Well, I just can't seem to pass that and get across. But anyway, the, I want to mention about process conversions of MSW to green fuels and chemicals, and mainly in green fuels, I'm talking about gasoline, because garbage is really a raw material. And everybody thinks it's a waste and everything else. Well, what somebody else's waste is somebody else's gold. And right now, Putnam County has some gold out there, and you can put together a program to make gasoline. The current process I'm talking about for the conversion of solid waste to green advanced fuels gasoline, using plasma arc gasification. Basically, what you do, if you look at the first slide there, is you take the municipal solid waste and you put it into a plasma arc gasifier to produce a syn gas. And just about anybody is known, as a chemist in Germany knew in World War II, they took syn gas and they produced a lot of gasoline, kept the war going for a number of years on their side. So all the chemists and everything had developed all these processes then, and at the beginning of the thirties and the forties. So once you know, anyone knows as a chemist, and I'm a chemical engineer, by the way, but the chemists, the good ones will tell you, if you've got carbon monoxide and hydrogen, you can make just about anything you want to make. But carbon monoxide and nitrogen are the building blocks for all the chemicals and just about everything we have. just about everything we have. And if you looked out in outer space, you'd figure that one out pretty quick. On the second slide, what I've given you is a pictorial representation. Oh. On the second slide, the pictorial representation of MSW to gasoline, and pictorially, because I want you to see that this is the way it would be done today with known technology. On the left-hand side, those are the materials and stuff like coke and flux, limestone, oxygen, electricity, and other materials that are required in a Westinghouse Plasma Gasifier. Because of the, when you're gasifying something in a gasifier, let's say at several thousand degrees Fahrenheit, you need materials like that for the flux and the slag, because garbage is a complex material. So, but if the feedstock was 800 tons per day of municipal solid waste and 200 tons per day of tires going into, let's say, a plasma arc gasifier like Westinghouse Plasma Corporations, you're gonna produce the syn gas. The syn gas will come over then and go into a gas-to-liquid process. Well, the syn gas to gasoline plant, which is the gas-to-liquid process, Primus has one out, but also ExxonMobil has it out there. So all that technology to take syn gas to gasoline is known technology. The gasification of municipal solid waste and tires is known technology. Because what I've done is I have proprietary information in my company that I have taken MSW at 800 tons per day and 200 tons per day of tires, and I have the mass and energy balances on a Westinghouse Plasma Gasifier G65. So I know exactly how much carbon monoxide and hydrogen is produced. And my company had Technip, Stone and Webster do a feasibility study on another process I'm working on and everything. But in that report is the valuable part for what I did here was taking carbon monoxide and hydrogen and making gasoline.